They work really well.
I'm so.
I'm so.
See, that's not a bad idea.
Well, you're the one with the good horse.
Well, if looks could kill.
We call this regularly scheduled meeting for tonight, January twenty ninth, to reschedule for January twenty second order. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everyone. Like to go ahead and accept the motion for the approval of the agenda for tonight?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion's carried. We do not have any presentations tonight, so we'll move on into our consent agenda. We have the approval, the amendments for January second of twenty eighteen, January eighth of twenty eighteen, and the approval of the disbursements through January twenty second of twenty eighteen. Is there a motion to go ahead and accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's carried. Public comment. Does anybody from the audience wish to address the city council? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and close the public comment of the meeting. We do not have any public hearings tonight, so we will now move right on into our regular agenda. And the first thing on the docket is eight alpha, which is the La Sure Community Center Organization and Funding Analysis Study.
Seven percent was other, that was things we just couldn't categorize, a few one-off responses. Six percent had transportation issues that kept them from going. Six percent said they had other facilities they could use. This included people that might have a treadmill or an elliptical in their homes or that just chose to jog around the community outside instead of going into the community center. And three percent didn't even know it was there. Again, that was mostly people from out of, outside of the city limits or, or people who hadn't lived here for any length of time. Let's see, the next slide, we covered all of that already. We were asked what sort of, if we made upgrades to the facilities and programs, if we could lure them in. So they were asked how likely they would be to come in if we made some improvements. And we had about, about a fifth of our interviewed people said that they would actually be a lot more likely to come in if, if improvements were made. Another third said they might be somewhat likely, and then about half said probably wouldn't make any difference. Again, with these scales that we use, I caution you not to read too much into the orange slice of pie there with people who said they'd be somewhat likely. A lot of those responses might just be people being polite to the interviewer. And in some cases, it's people looking forward to New Year's resolutions that they might not ever follow through on. So that just, just a caveat on that one, that it's nice that they're nice to us, but I'm not going to bet the farm on it. Going back to the list of eleven elements that we were talking about as far as importance and satisfaction for our non-active users, we asked them about that same list. Basically to find out if improvements to that particular area would make them more likely to show up. So one more time, looking at the colorful bar graph. The areas where we had a lot of people saying that they would show up more often, strength training at free weights, the indoor and outdoor pools, the online registration. And then it kind of falls off after that, cardio machines, ice rink. You can see the rest of the list there. The, this one again is sorted by how many people said they'd be mu, you know, they would show up much more often. You'll see that the length of the orange segments there, as far as people showing up somewhat more often, that's, there's some fairly wide variation there. But again, I think it's most important that we look at the, the blue segments there because that's where we've got people feeling they can actually commit to a, a strong response. Everyone, all hundred and seventy-one, were asked about the membership fees. Surprisingly enough, not too many people thought they were too low. About seventeen percent had no opinion about them. That was mostly people that didn't belong and, and didn't know how much it cost, so they weren't able to make a guess at it. You had about, four percent said that fees were much too high and about twenty-two percent who thought they were somewhat high. And then more than half of, of our participants thought that things were about right as far as the membership fee costs. Let's see, we asked about potential costs for improvements at the community center. And this was put in terms, not so much of membership fees, but of the possibility of actually having city revenues used for improvements to the community center. And we tested a few potential tax impacts for what those improvements might cost. We split our sample in half, so half of our participants were asked about annual impacts and half were asked about monthly impacts. You can see the results on the chart on the next slide. Not surprising that the higher impacts had lower support from the people that were participating in the survey. Little bit more surprising, it's not unusual that we see that annual impacts are lower than monthly impacts just because they're larger numbers and people tend to be a lot more. They don't care quite so much about five or ten bucks a month than they do if you're talking about a hundred bucks all at the same time. In this case, the gap between the two lines is lar, is wider than I'm used to seeing. I'm usually not surprised if there's a fifteen-point gap there. In this case, we're talking about twenty-seven to twenty-nine points in between those two lines. So that just tells me there's a real sensitivity to that annual figure. It's a little bit more exaggerated than I'm used to seeing in surveys of this type. At the end of the survey, we asked folks whether they agreed or disagreed with the idea that the community center is an important contributor to the quality of life in La Sure. This pie chart is very nice. Two-thirds of our respondents said it was a very important contributor to the quality of life. And almost everyone else said it was, you know, that, that they agreed. Maybe not as strongly, but they still agreed. And then almost nobody said that they disagreed and three percent didn't have an opinion to share. One surprising thing that I saw when I was looking at these numbers is that of those who said they strongly agreed with the idea that it was an important contributor, that figure is actually ten points higher in the surrounding area than it was for our respondents within the city itself. It was sixty-two percent had strong agreement in La Sure versus seventy-three percent strongly agreed outside. That just struck me as kind of a surprise when I was digging into the numbers. That was pretty much it for the survey that we did. Like I say, we had split it between the, the users and non-users to try and get an idea about what your users liked and to find out what might be able to bring in some of your non-users. I can take questions about the survey now, or I can turn it over to Patty and we can save the overall questions to the end. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Okay, so looking at the organizational management portion of the study, the process you see up on the slide is basically, we kicked off with staff meetings, visited the community center, looked at the current org chart within the park and rec department, some of the programming aspects. We attempted to reach out to several other communities and, that have community centers as well as looking at partnership opportunities or potentials for the city. So again, first step, we had, in August, we kicked off with two days of staff meetings. We met with the park and rec staff, we met with the police chief, Jasper set up a bunch of different meetings for us and just kind of talked through, you know, standard list of questions, but we, we let the conversations go as they may. And when through that, we did a SWOT analysis, which we came up with some five key themes that we tried to group, what we heard from staff. And, and so the first theme, we said that to be an asset, the community center will need to have a facelift of the facilities. And some of those aspects include that the last major upgrade was in oh-six. So we talked about preparing a capital improvement plan and we were provided with, with that initial CIP. Know that you're in the process of working through that, but I don't believe it was formally adopted, at least at the time that we were working through it. So that's why we mentioned it in the report, as well as a strategic plan and come up with a formalized mission statement for the center. I was on the website today and I saw, you know, on the community center, it says the mission of, of the center is to provide a fun and safe place for area community members. And it went into something, I'm not sure if that was formally adopted or if, if that's just something that was on the page, but it's something that we recommend to give you guidance going forward. A second theme was what physical improvements could be made to the community center. As Matt alluded to, forty-five percent of the survey people visited for weight and cardio. And we were told that some of the equipment's five years old, the weight equipment is eight years plus older. And so I think those are the important things that people said that they were using for and looking for updates. Entryway updates, interior and exterior signage, we said could be updated. And people mentioned the locker rooms, that the, the showers and the lockers and the men's locker room. Another theme, three that we had, key, key findings are, are what other, what other improvements to the community center that could be made that aren't necessarily visible to the public. Some staff mentioned, again, it's been since, I think, oh-six that the HVAC has been updated or upgraded. We talk again about a, a marketing plan and computer, computer software and/or programming is needed. And again, that's something that was relayed, that, that's in the works and things that were, has been being discussed, but we, we noted that here. The possibility of creating a park and rec commission was brought up as well as better interdepartmental communications, more meeting. Staff was eager to have a little bit more knowing what's going on. And I think it was the time that we were meeting, it was around the giant run. And so there was a lot of stuff happening that, that people wanted to stay in the loop on. Theme four, what are the strengths of the community center? Obviously, the only one between Shakopee and Mankato, a great place, well-known. You have a strong youth hockey association, that's my YHA up there, although I couldn't connect with the, the president there. That had, that was brought up quite a bit. The indoor/outdoor pool, obviously, the contribution of the gym floor. The visit we had, it was clean and it's very, I don't know if very uncommon, but to have twenty-four-hour access. That also tied a little bit, made it a little bit hard, I think, for us as far as scanning and memberships and how many people are scanning to get in versus scanning to get to the gym. And that kind of put a, a kink in trying to get some of those benchmarks and some of those things, looking at member numbers. And then the final theme we had is what opportunities does a community center have that can take advantage of the strengths? The senior programs and instructor-led classes seem to be popular. You can market to surrounding communities and/or other businesses. And reviewing the current fee structure for competitiveness, exploring more fundraising beyond just the, the gym floor that was donated. And then review your community education agreements, and I'll get into that a little bit more. After the staff meetings, then, we went over and received a tour of the community center with Lane. So the current staff structure is up on the slide, as I'm sure you're aware of. I don't really need to belabor into that. For our assessment, we thought that being responsible for the community center operations, community education, as well as park maintenance was a lot for one person to be in charge of. And kind of uncommon from what we've seen. Just being pulled in so many directions, I think, limits the ability to focus on some of those longer-term planning items that we mentioned, the mission statement, the strategic goals and CIP and so forth. As far as the programming data, again, I kind of alluded to that with the, the scans. I think that there's software out there that you can see how many people specifically.
Um, about seventeen percent had no opinion about them. Um, that was mostly people that didn't belong and, and didn't know how much it cost. So they weren't able to make a guess at it. You had about, um, four percent said that fees were much too high. And about twenty-two percent who thought they were somewhat high. And then more than half of, of our participants thought that things were about right as far as the membership fee costs. Let's see, um, we asked about, uh, potential costs for improvements at the community center. And this was, uh, put in terms, not so much of membership fees, but of the possibility of actually having, city revenues, uh, used for improvements to the community center. And we tested a few potential tax impacts for, um, what those improvements might cost. We split our sample in half, so half of our participants were asked about annual impacts and half were asked about monthly impacts. You can see the results on the chart on the next slide. Not surprising that the higher impacts had lower support from the people that were participating in the survey. Little bit more surprising, um, it's not unusual that we see that annual impacts are lower than monthly impacts just because they're larger numbers and, and people tend to be a lot more. They don't care quite so much about five or ten bucks a month than they do if you're talking about a hundred bucks all at the same time. In this case, the gap between the two lines is lar- is wider than I'm used to seeing. I'm usually not surprised if there's a fifteen point gap there. Um, in this case, we're talking about twenty-seven to twenty-nine points in between those two lines. So, um, that just tells me there's a real sensitivity to that annual figure. It's a little bit more exaggerated than I'm used to seeing in surveys of this type. Um, at the end of the survey, uh, we asked folks, um, whether they agreed or disagreed with the idea that the community center is an important contributor to the quality of life in La Sure. This pie chart is very nice. Two-thirds of our respondents said it was a very important contributor to the quality of life. And, um, almost everyone else said it was, um, you know, that, that, that they agreed. May- not as strongly, but they still agreed. And then, uh, almost nobody said that they disagreed and three percent didn't have an opinion to share. One surprising thing that I saw when I was looking at these numbers is that, um, of those who said they strongly agreed with the idea that it was a com- an important contributor, that figure is actually ten points higher in the surrounding area than it was for our respondents within the city itself. It was sixty-two percent had strong agreement, um, in La Sure versus seventy-three percent strongly agreed outside. That just struck me as kind of a surprise when I was digging into the numbers. That was pretty much it for the survey that we did. Um, like I say, we had split it between the, the users and non-users to try and get an idea about what your users liked and, um, to find out what might be able to bring in some of your non-users. I can take questions about the survey now, or I can turn it over to Patty and we can save the overall questions to the end. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Okay, so looking at the organizational management portion of the study, the process you see up on the slide is basically, we kicked off with staff meetings, um, visited the community center, looked at the current org chart within the park and rec department, some of the programming aspects. We attempted to, uh, reach out to several other communities and, uh, that have community centers as well as, um, looking at partnership opportunities or potentials for the city. So again, first step, we had, uh, in August, we kicked off with two days of staff meetings. We met with the park and rec staff, we met with the police chief, we met Jasper, set up a bunch of different meetings for us. Um, and just kind of talked through, you know, standard list of questions, but we, we let the conversations go as they may. And when through that, um, we did a SWOT analysis, which we came up with some five key themes that we tried to group what we heard, um, from staff. And, and so the first theme, uh, we said that, uh, to be an asset, the community center will need to have a facelift of the facilities. And some of those aspects, uh, include that the last major upgrade was in oh-six. Uh, so we talked about, um, preparing a capital improvement plan. And we were provided with, um, with that initial CIP. Know that you're in the process of working through that, but, um, I don't believe it was formally adopted, at least at the time that we were working through it. So that's why we mentioned it in the report, um, as well as a strategic plan and come up with a formalized mission statement for the center. I was on the website today and I saw, you know, on the community center, it says the mission of, um, of the center is to provide a fun and safe place for area community members. And it went into something, I'm not sure if that was formally adopted or if, um, if that's just, uh, something that was on the page, but it's something that we recommend to give you guidance going forward. Um, a second theme was what physical improvements could be made to the community center. As Matt alluded to, forty-five percent of the, uh, survey people visited for weight and cardio. And we were told that some of the equipment's five years old, the weight equipment is eight years plus older. And so I think those are the important things that people said that they were using for and looking for updates. Um, entryway updates, um, interior and exterior signage, we said could be updated. And, um, people mentioned the locker rooms, um, that the, the showers and the lockers and the men's locker room. Um, another theme, three that we had, uh, key, key findings are, are what other the, what other improvements to the community center that could be made that aren't necessarily visible to the public. Some staff mentioned, again, it's been since, I think, oh-six that the HVAC, um, has been updated or upgraded. We talk again about a, a marketing plan and computer, computer software and or programming is needed. And again, that's something that was relayed that, that's in the works and things that were, has been being discussed, but we, we noted that here. The possibility of, uh, creating a park and rec commission was brought up as well as, um, better interdepartmental communications, more meeting, staff was eager to have a little bit more, um, knowing what's going on. And I think it was the time that we were meeting, it was around the giant run. And so there was a lot of stuff happening that, um, that people wanted to stay in the loop on. Theme four, uh, what are the strengths of the community center? Obviously, uh, the only one between Shakopee and Mankato, uh, a great place, um, well-known. You have a strong youth hockey association, that's my YHA up there, although I couldn't connect with the, the president there. That had, that was brought up quite a bit. Um, the indoor/outdoor pool, obviously the contribution of the gym floor. The visit we had, it was clean and it's very, um, I don't know if very uncommon, but to have twenty-four hour access. Um, that also tied a little bit, made it a little bit hard, I think, for us as far as scanning and memberships and how many people are scanning to get in versus scanning to get to the gym. And that kind of, uh, put a, a kink in trying to get some of those, uh, benchmarks and some of those things, looking at member numbers. Um, and then the final, uh, theme we had is, um, what opportunities does a community center have that can take advantage of the strengths? The senior programs and instructor-led classes seem to be popular. You can market to surrounding communities and or other businesses. And, um, reviewing the current fee structure for competitiveness, exploring, um, more fundraising beyond just the, the gym floor that was donated. Um, and then review your community education agreements, and I'll get into that a little bit more. After the staff meetings, then we went over and received a tour of the community center with, uh, Lane. So the current staff structure is up on the slide, um, as I'm sure you're aware of. I don't really need to belabor into that. For our assessment, um, we thought that being responsible for the community center operations, community education, as well as park maintenance was a lot for one person to be in charge of. And kind of uncommon from what we've seen. Just being pulled in so many directions, I think, uh, limits the ability to focus on some of those longer-term planning items that we mentioned, the mission statement, the strategic, um, goals and CIP and so forth. As far as the programming data, again, I kind of alluded to that with the, the scans. I think that there's software out there that you can see how many people specifically are in a program, how much it's costing you to run that program and how, what's your profit or losses on those. And we hope that that can be improved with, with the computer software. So what we looked at is a couple of different options, um, for staffing. In either case, we, um, believed that, well, staff had mentioned that there was, um, a need for additional park maintenance help. Um, some of the part-time could be full-time people. Um, and we thought that moving that to the park maintenance aspect into, um, the public works department would provide some, some benefits, um, and the seasonality of some of the things can, um, increase flexibility of your staff as well. Four of the eight comps that we had included in the report do have the parks, people, the maintenance folks underneath, um, public works. So that is not uncommon for what we have seen. I think the biggest takeaway from either of these options, this one or the next one, is parks, parks maintenance to public works and then the segregation of duties. Several, several of the people that we looked at, they have community center directors, they have, um, they have rec coordinators, they have park superintendents. So then the outline here that we noted, um, in option one has an assistant city administrator in charge of then both the recreation coordinator and the community center director. We noted that you can move the community ed to, um, back to the school district. But we do agree that someone, someone had brought it up that, um, the one-stop shop is a right, nice, um, availability there for you at the community center. I think, um, it's just more so from what we thought is that you should look into the funding formula and see how that is relaying versus the time that the director spends on community ed activities. The second, um, proposed staffing option, which I think we lean a little bit more towards this, which, which maintains the community ed within, uh, within the current department. But it has either an ACA assistant city administrator or a department head in, um, overseeing the community center manager who then oversees recreation coordinator and or administrative assistant.
So on that diagram, in your narrative, you talk about a recreation coordinator, but then that, that isn't on that diagram.
That would be the community center manager, I think. It's just a title, yeah, just a title different. Um, I'd mention this briefly. The director mentioned about forty-five to fifty percent of time was spent on community ed activities. And we're under the understanding that forty percent of, of his salary is reimbursed from the district. So just a review of that and, um, and maybe again, with different software, different, uh, programming aspects, you can keep a better track of what that actually is and hone in on that, the fairness of the contract. And again, programming software is, are, is going to be updated is our understanding. And integrated would be very helpful, um, to know what program is happening, want to not have overlapping of programming amongst community ed and the community center. So reviewing the other community centers, um, put a list together and contacted, I contacted all of, all of the people here as, um, noted in the eight people on the list here. This was very difficult and I noted this in our, our report. Only Redwood Falls was basically structured, how your current park and recs department is structured, as I mentioned, um, previously. And it's in the report, I think on page seventeen, it shows different staff structures for each of those different communities. For example, I said one has a park and rec director that was in charge of just the ice arena. One had, and the same department had a community center director in charge of the community center. And then a park and rec superintendent who was in charge of maintenance. Some of, some of the other, on the next slide, the three of the eight had, um, affiliations with the YMCA or the National Guard. A couple of people tried to pursue it and then determined they weren't interested. And a couple of people, um, said to me that they think you have to have an awfully large community to get the YMCA to be involved, um, to take any of the aspects of that. And being a smaller community here, they didn't know that that would be possible. It's always something you can explore, but that was their, um, their dealings with, with the Y, YMCA folks. Let's see here. And then, as I mentioned, it isn't uncommon for us to see park maintenance fall under the public works. Four of the eight that I had talked to on that list, that was the case. Partnership opportunities, I, my coworker dove into this a little bit more. So I'm just kind of paraphrasing the list that's included in your report. Obviously, you have the SNAP Fitness here and that might be a good thing to explore, particularly in keeping up equipment and keeping it up to date. We can have a, uh, JPA, you could form a joint powers agreement between the city, the county, the school district. You can contact Mankato YMCA, um, and the other items that are noted here.
Except that, excuse me, organization like SNAP Fitness is a franchisee. And the, the master franchise would, um, would have to make agreements for anything like that to even be considered. And the, the likelihood of that happening is not going to be very large.
Totally noted.
When it comes to YMCA's, YMCA's are going to have a board of six to ten people. And they'll be calling the shots and the decisions. And that can take months and months and months for decisions to be made and remade and made and remade.
Just familiar with the folks that having like made board up in, in the cities. I mean, they're really grateful to have them take over the operations and it works for them. But what works for them doesn't necessarily work for you, but, uh, always an option that you could, you could explore. So as Matt alluded to, the next steps, what we thought, um, you, you as a council need to determine if it's the asset, as the survey respondents determined, ninety-five percent of them indicated that they think it's a good community asset. We thought it was a great place when we visited. But our first steps, and I know we didn't outline specifically, because I think it's going to be just different decisions that you have to make at different times, but I think we should, um, focus first on the org structure and try and alleviate some of the responsibilities, um, from the director to have more, um, focused activities that are happening there. And then that includes preparing a strategic plan, the next slide, preparing the CIP, upgrades of the computer, computer system and programming software to be able to track some of the profitability and loss. And is it worth it to ha- hold a program if three people are participating, for example? And then looking at other partnerships, it's great that the, the gym floor, um, was donated. It was, is there other areas, possibilities for, um, fundraising in that respect? This was a lot of, a lot of study and we appreciate you all giving us the opportunity. We appreciate the staff's time. Lane provided a lot of information, as did Jasper, and kind of back and forth on those areas that we had questions. So we appreciate that.
So that's the, the presentation. If there are questions, I think now would be the appropriate time. What I'm looking for is essentially direction from city council, how to proceed. In the staff report, you'll see, um, my recommendation would be to send this report and this information to the personnel and budget committee and then assign the personnel and budget committee with the task of recommending something to city council, whatever that may be. I feel that would be appropriate for the, the content that's in the report. So that's, that's what I'm looking for, uh, just direction via a motion of some sort on how to proceed. So, uh, with that, Patty, can I answer any questions that you may have?
On your chart on page fourteen, where you talk about, uh, option two. You do not have the community education piece on there.
We don't, but I believe it would be the responsibility of the recreation coordinator slash community center manager. It would re- remain in that area.
So would we have a, another box below the community center manager then?
Um, we can add that and or put a, um, if you decide that that's where you want the responsibilities to lie, then we can put that community center manager slash community education there.
And I can add something. So these, these are generally just some kind of spitballing ideas, things that have worked in other communities. What I would say is that use, the personnel and budget committee could use this as kind of a basis to develop it in a manner that would fit La Sure, um, the best way that it can. So a lot of the, the titles, names like that, I don't foresee this being exactly what would happen. But in general, it's a good starting place to start a conversation.
The, um, the membership numbers, in one, on one page, it says six hundred and eighty-four. It's on, I think, page six. And then on page eight, it says, uh, sixteen hundred and fifty. Six hundred and eighty-four would be a hundred and twenty-something, um, members under what in Anytime Fitness, just opening its doors at five thousand square feet would be. Sixteen hundred and fifty members would be a, um, Gold's Gym or a Planet Fitness with probably close to eighty pieces of cardio. So what, what do we have for members? Is it six hundred and eighty-four or sixteen hundred and fifty?
I think, and I can defer to Lane, but I think the one is the memberships that might have multiple dual members under a membership. So one is a, could be a family that gets you to the sixteen fifty members. Yes.
So it was six hundred and eighty-four memberships?
Mm-hmm.
And some of those are family ones?
Correct.
Number up to sixteen hundred?
Yes.
Singles, single plus one, seniors, students, families, resident, non-resident. Six eighty-four, now it's done, equals the sixteen, whatever that pay.
Mr. Mayor, I have two questions, if I may. In one of the slides, you mentioned youth opportunities. Is there some thought that that should be a part of community ed or in some way run by the community center? Was that to be inferred from that, or was it just noted that somehow you'd use them for scheduling? It wasn't clear.
I think more so what we were hoping was that the programming aspect would take into account what they're programming. So you don't have overlap between the community center, between you and, and the school district.
Okay, but there was, we're not too, that's not indicating then that they should be combined. It's just simply indicated we should coordinate, is that what you're saying?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, second question, we're going to start a firestorm here. Were there aspects financially where we are spending far more percentage-wise of our staff and maintenance and, uh, capital improvement compared to others? And I'm going to mention one, the ice rink. It seems to me that it's possible, I don't know this, that that consumes a large part of our cost for a community center. Do you have any, any data on that, that you discovered?
I do not, no.
It could be true with the cardio and all that too. I'm not, but, you know, logically, you, if you're going to try to not necessarily break even, but at least make an effort to financially be sound, we'd want to look at some of those areas. That's why I'm asking.
During the, during the off-ice season time, how much time does the, um, does that real estate section get used? So in other words, when we're looking at the cost of, of the ice rink and what, redoing the roof and everything else, what else is that being used for, for the community and to bring in, um, either additional revenues or even if it's not for additional revenues for outreach and programs for the community? Is it being used outside of ice time?
My understanding was not a lot, if at all. And a lot of it, um, was with the, um, air conditioning or not air conditioning with the, how the temperature was regulated there or not regulated in the summer. Um, I think that's when we had visited, obviously in August, and it was a little stuffy in there. And there wasn't, I, I wasn't aware of any programs that were happening in there.
I had a question for you, Matt, uh, going back to the chart, um, uh, the, the slide on the impact of cost information where you were talking about the disparity, uh, of more than fifteen points.
Oh, between monthly and annual?
When you asked the question, how was the question asked? Was it, was it, let's, let's, let's try to make it simplistic here. Let's just say, for example, you had ten dollars a month, so a hundred and twenty annual. Is that how the question was asked to people, or was it asked if there was a break given?
No, the, the chart there that you see, we asked at the, the amounts that were shown there. So it would have been, um, half of the interviews would have asked at sixty dollars a year, ninety dollars a year, or a hundred and twenty dollars a year. And then the other half of the interviewers were getting the equivalent, um, monthly amount. So five bucks, seven and a half, or ten bucks a month. For each of the two groups, um, they were given those amounts in random order so that we were trying to keep people from anticipating what the next number might be and tailoring their responses accordingly. So some people might have gotten it low to high, high to low, some got it the middle one first and then it bounced to either end. So we tried to drive out some of the, the bias as far as the ordering went. But yeah, they were asked those three per, specific levels and, um, just whether they could support, um, you know, contributing at that level.
So based off Spring Stud's experience, uh, by doing these types of studies in the past, can Spring Stud tell us that if by chance we were to offer a percentage off if you paid all at once, do your other clients, uh, is that something they jump on, is that successful?
Um, often, usually when I'm doing surveys in this kind of context, it's, it's a, a property tax-related question. And so, um, your hands are kind of tied as far as how people pay their property taxes. They, they get their bill, you know, it comes out of their mortgage escrow or they write a check. And so I don't have a lot of background as far as what some of your options might be as far as the, uh, mix and match or prepay or something like that.
I've got three questions. One, going back to the statistics about the number of people, uh, interviewed. You had sort of a third of those interviewed had not visited at all, right?
Uh, yeah, I believe so.
And a third had visited less than one time per month. So two-thirds of them had, so there was zero to one time per month was two-thirds of the people interviewed out of a hundred and seventy-one. Is that correct?
Right.
So how, how could those two-thirds, or how could the one-third that had not visited give an opinion on, on what they were interested and satisfied on?
Uh, they weren't asked. So the, the, the overall universe, we had a hundred and seventy-one interviews that we were able to complete. The questions that were asked about satisfaction or importance or, um, you know, what's the main thing that you use most often, those were asked of, um, a hundred and sixteen out of that group. So we were including the third that only went there once in a while. But we weren't asking that of the people who said they never went there.
Okay.
And then, yeah.
Instead of a hundred and seventy-one, it's a hundred and sixteen that the interest and the satisfaction is based on. Is that correct?
Um, let me, I had a couple of different cutoffs there. For the, um, importance and satisfaction, I think it was a hundred and three. Because we, first we cut out the people that never went there at all, and that left us with about a hundred and sixteen. Um, and then we cut out the people who said that they only went there to spectate or to drop off the kids. And so that, I believe, left us with a hundred and three that we were classifying as active users. So they actually went there to do some kind of activities, um, that were not just dropping off the kids.
Okay. My second question is, I think, uh, you used the phrase, a need for more focused programming. What do you mean by focused? I mean, is, what is, what does more focused mean?
I think more detailed, we were looking for, I mean, to the software.
Is that what, I'm not sure exactly where you're looking at focus, but I mean.
Under one of the attributes, under the themes, you'd given several different, uh, subparts to those themes. And you had more focused, more focused programming was on one of those.
I think, again, if I recall, I think it's focusing on, um, each of the programs individually and keeping a little bit of records on activity levels, again, getting to the profit and loss as far as focusing on the aspects that you can deem from the programming.
Okay, so it's more focused data evaluation?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, the last question is. Okay, the last question is, um, in the, in the packet of information that we were given tonight, that were include some responses of, to questions that I had emailed in. There's some charts there, uh, from the National Park and Recreation Association, charts and graphs, bar graphs, some pie charts. Are those gonna be included in the final report?
Sure.
Or are those gonna end up?
I can add them as in a, uh, in a amendment or addendum, or some appendix to the, to the study.
That was, I mean, I, one of the things that I noticed in the report was I didn't see, I didn't see benchmarks.
There wasn't a lot, again, back to the, I mean, you know, some of the benchmarks they have are financial, and they get to be so operating expenses for your park and rec department. Well, it was really hard to say if that, some of the communities don't do, um, park maintenance, or if that was under public work. So it was, I didn't wanna throw something out there that wasn't sensible to try and compare to. But I, I did, these ones are, as you can see, are more, um, demographic type as opposed to financial type metrics.
Yeah.
Yeah.
At least it gives us some idea of what the benchmarks are.
Yep.
To these things.
Uh-huh, yeah, and I can definitely put those in the report.
Is it possible for, in the report, um, on your page three, figure seventeen, when talking about expenditures, uh, when talking about rev- revenue, rather than just having percentage rates, can we have dollars to go along with the percentage rates? Cause I think that's important for everybody to see what the actual dollar amounts for these things are.
Are you referring to the pie charts?
No, uh, yeah, um, and page three on the questions answered.
Sure.
I have another question. I didn't see it in here, and it, there's a lot here, so I could have missed it, and we understand that, I think. These are obviously, this is an effective enterprise of the city, and it's being subsidized, obviously, by taxes. How do we compare to these other communities in terms of the percentage, if you wanna call it that, I'll call it that, that is being supported through taxation as opposed to user fees, other funding sources?
I don't know if I looked into that information, I can definitely go back to those eight communities. But I did include, again, that same page, you can see on the national benchmark, looks like it's about fifty-nine percent, um, have tax support, where you were at thirty-four and forty-three percent.
Okay. Yeah, by the way, as we, as we went to some training, as we gave new council members it, there was a presentation on finances and things of this nature. And it was basically absolutely understood that we would have to underwrite this. It's sort of a given in this business of community and rec, but I, I'd like to know where we compare in general, so thank you.
Yeah, and, and just doing golf course studies or community center studies, anytime there's debt service typically really outstanding for these facilities, that's, they don't make money, they need the support. I mean, those are the only times that we generally see that they're self-supporting as if there's no debt service related to the facility, which, given the nature, there's usually always some sort of loan or some upgrades or debt related to that.
But that's a very important metric to understand, so that we know how to proceed.
Yep.
The, the money. Going back on your chart on, or your graph on page two here, where you're talking about the full-time equivalents per ten thousand?
Uh-huh.
You have La Sure at fourteen point five, of course, our population's four thousand fifty-eight, so I understand the math. But when I look at this, outside of Redwood Falls at seventeen point nine, how could the other communities that were part of the study be so low to do the type of work that would be required to maintain a ten thousand population base?
That's probably why I didn't include it in the original report, because I, I was looking at that this today too, and I'm like, well, how does La Sure have fourteen and a half? You know, and then I went back to the math, cause you're under the ten thousand population, which is why it works out that way. Um, but it's basi- basically, I took, the math is the math, but the numbers of FTEs are coming from the people that I contacted. Um, or org charts within financial statements, but oftentimes even those, I had to get some clarification from staff and call them up and ask them about that.
We had another question for you in regards to the spreadsheet on page eighteen regarding the, uh, admissions for twenty sixteen. If my California math is correct, we had about two hundred and nine people, members, and about five non-members enter the facility each day for the entire year. Now that said, with our scanning system that we have, are we accurately collecting the metrics that we need to know how many people are actually using the facility, or do we have a lot of walk-in traffic that are not using their IDs? Or someone's holding the door and allowing someone to come in, did you know, what, what can you tell us in regards to what you observed with that practice?
I asked that if everybody that comes in scans their card, and I think the answer was no, so I don't know how you can have, um, accurate. You know, if they, the center's open and they just walk in and don't need it, but for it to go up to the gym, or what if they just went to a different area where they didn't need to get scanned in, so, um.
Is the scan just at the front door to get into the main, or are there other scans?
Get into the pool?
Gym.
Okay. Any other questions?
That happens a lot when, um, when there's hockey going on at night, when they go start their cars up, and then kids are there. And somebody holds the door for the parent to get back in, this sort of thing, so you don't know what else is going in there too, so.
So the number that's going through doesn't necessarily mean they're utilizing the facility, they could be there to pick up kids, or?
Or they could be using that too, yeah, who knows?
Does the system just, um, recognize when the door is open and closed and open and closed?
You, I guess I'm not sure.
Um, I can answer that question, it, it doesn't track doors opening, it's, it's all, uh, cards scanned. I got distracted, I was gonna mention something else, but it might come back to me.
Any other questions?
Any on council?
Council members.
And, and, yeah, it's, it's hard to say that. This is, this is my industry, and, and, in, in something this size, um, it's a full-time job to manage one of these things. And, and I think that, that the bottom line with this is, is no matter how many people were polled, they have an opinion on the pool and on the, the, um, and on the presentation and on the outside pool and the, and the ice rinks and so on. Um, there's two different, two separate issues, there's the, the running and, uh, running and operations and, and the scheduling and so on, uh, that, that maintain and keep that in operation of that side. How many square foot is that? How much?
Fifty-three, fifty-three thousand.
Fifty-three thousand square feet is a, is a, that's a good-sized facility with a lot of amenities and a lot of programming. And it's, uh, for one individual to handle all of the things that are going on, um, that's, that's the bottom line of this and why we're talk, why the whole discussion runs around, um, reorganization to try to take the person who's going to manage this, the job is to manage this.
I remembered what I was gonna state, so, so, um, Mayor Hags, uh, numbers of, it's California math, of two hundred and nine members, five non-members a day, if you think about it the way it's set up right now, that would be a conservative estimate. Likely there are members that are being missed, um, things of that nature. So those numbers, um, you know, they're, we're going through an exercise of trying to determine daily active users and annual equivalent users, so we can kinda get a, a baseline of what's actually out there to help us kind of understand what's happening. So, that, that math, I would say, would be on the low end, uh, of the spectrum, and I would say, you know, I don't know what percentage I could tie to it, but I think it would increase if we would get actual, actual usage. So that was, that was what I forgot earlier.
Any other questions? I did have a question, uh, in regards to the Hockey Association. Because we're gonna have to go ahead and have a final report anyway, how difficult would it be to go ahead and reach out to the Hockey Association and get some of their input, uh, because that's a pretty big piece, there's an awful lot of people that take advantage of the hockey.
I can try again, I've tried three times and not been able to get a response, so.
That's going directly to the president of the Hockey Association?
Correct.
Okay, we may have to go ahead and give you some names of some additional people that, uh, you can reach out to.
Sure.
Anybody else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I go ahead and entertain a motion then to go ahead and take the existing, uh, Springstead Community Center organizational funding and analysis study and turn this over to the Personnel and Budget Committee.
Okay, oh.
Is there a motion to do this?
I can't say, say yes or no to it, because I don't know if they're making any changes before it goes back to pl- uh, Planning and Budget.
Oh, I can speak to that, so the, the changes that I have noted down that will be updated into the report, um, I don't think would change my recommendation to go to the Personnel and Budget Committee. I think, yeah, they're gonna be gathering information probably above and beyond this report. Um, I'm guessing questions will arise that came from this report from the Personnel and Budget. So I would say if, if, I think maybe what you're saying is if we delay this another meeting and then talk about it and possibly do a, a motion. That is, City Council's prerogative, I don't think my recommendation would change based on the information requested tonight, if that helps clarify it.
Well, I think we're all on the same page as to what it is that they're saying. I'm, I'll make a motion to move it to the Planning, uh, Planning and Budget.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Well, I'm on the Planning and Budget Committee, so I think, what, what's the charge? We're, we're gonna turn it over to the Planning and Budget Committee to do what?
It's Personnel and Budget, isn't it? Okay, just so we're all clear.
What did I say, planning? I'm sorry.
Three times.
Personnel, Budget.
I would, uh, the recommendation that I would have is send it to the Personnel and Budget Committee, let them digest the information, and then look at some of the recommendations that Springstead has suggesting, and then possibly give recommendations to City Council. They might say that, well, this recommendation that Springstead gave isn't relevant, we don't believe that we need to pursue this, but this other one is. And then, you, maybe have an open line of communication with City Council as far as, um, you know, approvals, then, you know, sending things back and forth. It's just a basic, we have a study, we have a lot of data, how do we wanna use this data, and, and what are the priorities? Springstead gave us some examples, but once the Personnel and Budget Committee looks at it, those priorities might change, they might, it might look like something different. But the basis of the study was to gather information, uh, giving that information to the, to the Personnel and Budget will help them make recommendations. So I, I'd say it's a pretty broad, um, broad direction, but it's gotta go either Personnel and Budget or City Council needs to do the, do the work, um, Subcommittee, I think Personnel and Budget would be a perfect fit for it.
So, we're gonna digest this, analyze it, come back with some recommendations to a City Council meeting, any particular time? Is there a timeline on this?
I think, you, um, you know, from my discussions with Personnel and Budget, uh, with the meetings that we've had already, uh, we'll get started right away, and I think it'll take as much time or as little time as it, as it takes. Um, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna do it right, and I don't think we necessarily need to set a deadline on it, but we'll, we'll start working on it immediately.
After the requested information from Springstead regarding additional metrics and the other items that we asked for, how long do you figure it'll be before we get that information?
I'm guessing next couple days, um, so if, if there's a Personnel and Budget Committee meeting on Wednesday, which is one that's scheduled, um, there might be a draft final report, uh, that we have, and Personnel and Budget could give it, I'll, I'll, another look over. Um, I'll look at it too, based on the notes I have, then, from the direction that was given, to make sure everything's hit. Uh, but, you know, once the Personnel and Budget Committee would have the report, then they could just continue to work on it and make recommendations to City Council.
Uh, I would prefer, uh, uh, remember that committee, I would prefer that we have the entire report in front of us before we start doing this. Before we vote on referring it, before we do anything, until we have the big picture, and then we know what we're up to. So I'll tell you right now, I might vote no to refer it if you do it today.
You might? Well, I can certainly understand it, it would be helpful to have all the information instead of waiting on something, so. With that said, uh, would, uh, you like to go ahead and withdraw your motion to move it on to the Personnel and Budget Committee?
I'll withdraw. So what I'll do is I'll, I'll wait to get the final report from Springstead, they likely won't be at the next meeting to present on the changes. So the, the, it'll be on the February twelfth meeting, I believe. Uh, you'll have the final report, and then you can take action at that time, uh, you know, give you a little bit more time to, to, uh, evaluate it and look at it. So that's perfectly fine.
Mr. City Administrator, if I may, I don't, I can't recall the contract, it's been a while, if we have them come here, will that give us any additional cost?
It, it was not part of the scope, so yes.
Could we have them do so electronically and save cost that way? Cause it's not gonna be everything, it's gonna be a shorter report.
And they're just making changes to what it is that we've asked for.
Potentially, let me, let me talk to them and see once, if it's within reason, if there is a cost, or if we can do it electronically, we'll, we'll try to make one of the options work. Either way, it's, it's, it's time for them that they didn't, uh,
Understood.
Think about when the proposal was, was submitted, so I'll work with them, I, see if I can talk them into coming down.
Councilmember Johnson, you had something?
So it's coming back to the, the, the whole final, the revised final report is coming back to the full council on February twelfth. And then take action on whether or not to send it to the Personnel and Budget Committee, is that the idea?
Correct.
Okay. So we're gonna go ahead and table, uh, eight Alpha until, uh, February twelfth's meeting. Next thing on the agenda is eight Bravo, which is our donation acceptance.
Mayor Hague, members of the City Council, uh, like we've done in the past with some of these larger donations, I like to bring them up at City Council meetings to express our gratitude for these types of things. Um, you know, not saying that we don't appreciate the smaller donations as well, but things of this nature where we're doing large projects, um, I think it's warranted. So what we have here is a charitable donate, or charitable gambling donation approval, that is earmarked to replace, uh, four team hockey locker room benches, uh, that are at the community center. And the, uh, the donations came from gambling proceeds from Max Green Mill Bar and the tune of four thousand two hundred and twenty dollars and ninety cents. Uh, The Bar in the same amount of four thousand two hundred and twenty dollars and ninety cents. And then the Knights of Columbus, uh, kicked in six hundred dollars. Uh, the total amount of this donation is nine thousand forty-one dollars and eighty cents. So with that, um, all we're looking for is to accept the donations, uh, as described in the staff report, and express gratitude to the organizations that are providing the funds.
So move?
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Just a thank you.
Well, I was just gonna say that.
Thank you.
Yes, on behalf of the entire City Council and the citizens of the city of La Sure, we owe debt of gratitude to Max Green Mill Bar, The Bar, and the Dr. Leclerc Council, the Knights of Columbus. Thank you very much.
We need to vote.
Yes, we do. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All, any opposed? Motion's carried. We now move on to eight Charlie, which is the Minnesota River Valley Public Utolli Commission, or better known as Murpuck Update and Discussion.
Mayor Hague, members of the City Council, uh, what I'd like to do is just start, uh, kinda the process of giving or the tradition of giving an annual update as far as what's going on at Murpuck. Uh, their budget was passed, uh, in twenty seventeen for twenty eighteen. And just kind of talk about what the initiatives are that Murpuck is going to, um, pursue in twenty eighteen. Uh, Councilmember Favalese is the newly elected chair of Murpuck, so he knows just as much as I do. So, uh, you know, this might be a, a tag-team effort, uh, Mark Huntington has been on the board for quite some time, and, and, uh, Kevin Wilkie, he's been there for a year now. So, uh, we have a good group of people that are from La Sure, and, uh, you know, Murpuck, like the city of La Sure, is tackling some pretty big things. Um, twenty eighteen initiatives, so during the budget process, and you'll see the budget has been included in the packet, you can see that there's some significant changes, uh, some utilization of existing fund balance to do some of these things, uh, you know. Wastewater treatment is an expensive thing to do, and, you know, it's not uncommon to have a project that, that exceeds.
half a million dollars or even more in some cases. But, the number one initiative or the direction that Murpuck is going is the initiative to hire their own employees. What they approved at the, at the meeting, or at the budget approval meeting is for, to start pursuing, and this thing, this isn't something you just flip a switch. There's a lot of legwork administratively that needs to be done in order for an organization to start hiring their own employees. From my understanding, this was the original vision of, of Murpuck. Certain reason, there's certain things that happened that we went down a different road when Murpuck was founded. So, the board has renewed that interest to, to hire Murpuck employees, and what they, what they wanna do is essentially have one director and two point five FTEs of operators, and then I think, I believe a quarter FTE of administrative assistance. So, you know, you look at these, half a FTE, what does that mean? That means that the city of La Sure is, is able to contract, which we currently do, I shouldn't say contract, there's no formal agreement, but we provide the services for Murpuck at the moment, all across the board. What this would do is, this would, Murpuck would have their own employees, and then they would be, also be able to use some of the city of, the city of La Sure's employees during certain situations, callouts, things like that. So, Murpuck will be talking about this throughout the beginning of the year and how they would like to proceed to complete this initiative. This is a big deal. This is a big task to take on. The biggest challenge that Murpuck has to take on this task is they don't have a dedicated staff member to do this work. There's a, again, a lot of administrative work that needs to be done, excuse me, so. We're gonna continue talking about it, but it's, it's a big thing. There's a section of land that likely will come up for sale in twenty eighteen, and Murpuck, the, the plant, in order to expand, it would be in their best interest to, to acquire it. There is some money allocated, or dollars allocated for that. The question that will likely come up with both City Councils of Henderson and La Sure is, who's gonna own that asset? Right now, the land that the, that Murpuck or the, the plant sits on is owned by the city of La Sure. It's deeded to the city of La Sure. This is the first time or first opportunity there has been to purchase land adjacent to that property, so those, those details will need to be worked out between Murpuck, Henderson, and the city of La Sure. That will likely be a future discussion, and as we transition from the initiatives to the, the joint powers agreement and a possible joint meeting with Henderson, that might be a topic of discussion, how we wanna handle assets, future assets. One of the projects that I've been working on, from, from my perspective, very important, is a centrifuge, centrifuge, Centrate project. So, centrifuge is a, is a large piece of equipment that rotates and it separates solids and liquids. There's a, there was a design flaw, or a design oversight, I would say, that the way the plumbing is set up, La Sure, the city of La Sure is, is getting billed for items or for waste that we've already paid for. So, we're essentially getting double billed for some of it. Now, this is a small amount every month, but, but this has been happening since the beginning of the plant. So, that compounds over time. What this project would do is, is fix that issue so that the city of La Sure no longer be getting double billed. The board is talking about it. They have directed the engineering staff to develop plans and figure out what it looks like to bid it and come up with a bidding schedule. So, that project, I believe, is moving forward, you know, with the steps that are available right now. The last initiative that I would say is very important is the pre-treatment screen project, so. There's a, there's a set of screens, just to simplify it, that basically screen out all the large solids that come through the initial waste stream. Our current system is very messy, the room that it's in is, I would say, very unclean, it's not clean, and it's not a product of the employees not doing their job, it's just a messy, messy machine. It's called a muffin monster, so you can Google that and take a look at a video and, and see once what it looks like. But, the, the pre-treatment screen that they're going to be looking at, pursuing as far as bidding out, is a much cleaner, cleaner machine, cleaner process. Staff has done a good job of doing their due diligence of looking at different wastewater facilities that have different pre-treatment screens, options. You know, I'm kind of, the process took longer and we kind of went back and forth, but I believe we're, we're gonna have a system that everybody agrees is the, is the best system moving forward. So, that pre-treatment screen project, I think it's estimated at five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The centrifuge project is estimated at hundred and sixty thousand, land acquisition, I believe, that earmarked two hundred and fifty thousand, so. There is a cost to hire Murpuck employees as well, so. The board direction was that the level of service or having a direct report to the board that the board can give direction to is very important, and will help Murpuck in the long run. So, that, that's the justification for hiring, hiring new employees. So, I look forward to the process of getting all this stuff done. It's, it's great for the plant. The plant is running very well. The last year and a half since I've been here, we've been, I think, lucky, you know, we've been, we've been addressing issues as they come up. Odor complaints are down for the plant. They're really nonexistent over the last year. I don't believe we actually received any odor complaints that were tied to the plant in the la, in twenty seventeen. So, it's a good thing because twenty sixteen odor report that S C H did indicated there were some odor issues there. So, we've, we've taken some measures to address that. With that, I'll, I'll go through and talk about kind of the J P A, so I think it's healthy for our cities, Henderson and La Sure, to meet on an annual basis and talk about, you know, is the J P A working, is there anything that we wanna do that we wanna talk about changing? If you remember back in, excuse me, February of twenty seventeen, city councils from both Henderson and La Sure passed an amendment to the J P A, just talking about board makeup. And that board makeup originally was five members. In practice, for the last few years, they were doing six members, three from each community. So, the J P A was amended just to reflect what's actually happening in order for us to appoint the proper people. One thing you'll hear me talk about is the revenue split. Every year, when we divvy up the assets for Murpuck, the city of La Sure and the city of Henderson, the process of that and what that entails is looking at how much revenue was generated by each community. And by each community, La Sure incorporates all of the city, and Agropure, a very large industrial user. Cambria is also in that mix. So, you'll look at the revenue split in twenty seventeen, and these are preliminary numbers. La Sure was ninety-five percent of that revenue, Henderson was five, and that number is actually, in twenty sixteen, that number was ninety-eight point five La Sure and one point five Henderson. And the big change was that Agropure has been running very well this year, so they haven't been sending high-strength material to the plant. So, then that, that amount of, of revenue split then kind of shifts a little bit towards Henderson. So, it changes every, every year. There was a request, so there, there was a surcharge program, and we're working through these, these things. But, we did have a surcharge reimbursement request. They had a surcharge program, they disbanded it. Basically, any overage above and beyond what your daily wasteload allocations were, you paid extra for the processing of that waste, and that waste then went into what was called a surcharge fund. The cities could, cities, including Agropure, could then request for reimbursement. Because of all the things that are in the budget for twenty eighteen, it was determined that the, the request was denied, or it was a split vote. So, it did not pass, but it was determined that the fund balance projected at the end of the year was lower than what the board felt comfortable with regarding a surcharge reimbursement for La Sure. And the reimbursement was for the infrastructure replacement along Second Street. And then, yeah, just talking a little bit about the joint powers agreement, I included what I would call an updated version. I went through and, and noted when there were amendments and things like that. Councilmember Johnson was asking about some of the two thousand seven amendments, and I provided that information. So, we have a, a sequence of, of agreements that I have archived. If there's any questions about when the, when, what the original J P A looked like compared to what it looks like now, just request that information, and I can provide that. So, you can look at, you know, just basically, there's four amendments that have occurred and what the changes actually were. But, moving forward, I'd like to keep it in this form and maybe potentially update it and have each city adopt it in this, in the, in the form that I've included so that it's easier to follow. It's all in one place, the updated J P A is all there in front of you. So, this possible joint meeting, and I've, I've spoken to a city administrator in Henderson about this, and we think it's a good idea. It's just a matter of discussing what topics or determining what topics. So, with the information that you have, and maybe Councilmember Favalese or Councilmember Wilkie or Councilmember Huntington have some other things that they wanna input. But, eventually, I'd like to work with the city administrator in Henderson and develop a, an agenda for a joint meeting. So, we were talking about, if you remember back to the February meeting, we had a lot of new, new individuals on there. It was kind of a lot of information to digest at that time. So, I wanna make sure that before this next meeting that we have, that everybody that is interested in it has enough time to ask questions, and I can provide the information they might need. So, you know, I'm not sure if the other members of Murpuck wanna add anything to that, but with that, it's just intended to be a little open discussion, give you guys an annual update about, about Murpuck and, and go from there. You know, we don't have to sit here and develop agenda items, but if there's something that comes up that you want included, send me an email, and I'm, I'll develop an ongoing list of, of items that we could discuss. And maybe, you know, something comes up, it's just a question, and I can answer it without having it be an agenda item, so.
The Murpuck Commission. We've made some, some, some pretty tough decisions this year. And a lot of it is based on what the spirit of the J P A is, and that is, it was intended to be a standalone entity. The reasoning for wanting to go forward with having, initially, it was just having the superintendent being an A-class license. That person being a, the employee. And, city of La Sure employees still working the way that they were, that was to keep costs down. Things had changed around and progressed and got a little confusing with how, how that could work. And so, it was, fine, we can make everybody an employee for, for Murpuck. The reality is, is that Murpuck is paying for the employees. We have to reimburse the city of La Sure for the time and so on. It was because of the way that things had operated in the past, we all found out, including the city administrator, that the city of La Sure hadn't been charging Murpuck for certain aspects of the operation. And that comes right down to even the vehicles that are being used, even though there's, the logo for Murpuck is on the vehicles, we're not paying for them, and you can't operate that way. The, the funds that we have, we are, we are fixing expensive things that are wrong. The, the additional cost for what the employees are, it is, it is more expensive than having the city of La Sure handle that. But, what's the issue with that? The issue with that is, is that to be a standalone entity, you don't have somebody, an individual, that answers directly to the puck. That person is not doing the financial aspect. There's no, that individual currently would answer directly to Jasper and, and through the city of, of La Sure, which kind of creates an issue of transparency. Because what's the puck doing at that point, other than just kind of being a, making basic decisions on things? It's not really running what you're supposed to be running. We don't have the information at our fingertips. We always have to go through the city of La Sure to get the information that, that we need. And, city staff isn't, doesn't have the resources to do that. And you gotta keep in mind, Jasper, what's the, and here we go again. How much money does it take per year to run that facility?
Just operations-wise, just over a million dollars. And I think, if you look at your, if I'll borrow this one here.
When you do that, Jasper, could you give us the column headings? It makes no sense not to know what these columns are.
Correct. Are they not on there?
They're not on here.
Not on the hard, they're on the online copy, but they're not on the hard copy.
Interesting, sorry about that. Yeah, must be a printer issue.
And the revenues aren't showing on the hard copy either.
Yep, so the first column, if I go by memory, is the twenty sixteen budget. The second column is the twenty seventeen budget, and the third column is the twenty eighteen adopted budget. The fourth column is the percent change from your, from twenty seventeen to twenty eighteen. So, you look at the, in general, the total cost to operate the plant, just over a million dollars, one million eight, eight thousand six hundred and seventy-five dollars is what the, what the general expenditures are for the plant.
So, in, in being, picture yourself as the board for a corporation, and you're expecting your, your manager to report to the board on all aspects that's going on, on a business. You're at a business that, that is turning over a million dollars a year in operations. And for us to get the information that we need, I have to go through somebody who's already doing a whole bunch of different jobs. And I may not get the information that I need when I need it. I may not, and he does a great job, don't get me wrong. But, it's not, it's, not only is it not efficient, it's not his job. You know, it, 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 that's not what the city administrator is supposed to be doing. So, the idea was to have that employee that would be answering directly to the puck. And then, that in turn, that person would be answering to city council here and in Henderson, and even talking with Agropure about changes in the plant and, and, and everything else, keeping everybody informed. But, that person would be involved in the day-to-day operations and managing the, the group. That's the basis of doing this.
On that point, can you, we have someone managing the plant right now?
No, you, it's different. It's different. He's part-time, and he's mostly, he is mostly working on water, not wastewater. You don't have an A license that is there all the time.
So, who's, who, what are the current employees, and what will they be if we ended up approving these additions?
Go ahead, Jasper.
I can, I can talk a little bit about it. So, there, there's been a lot of change even prior to me being here. So, previously, Brian Skok, I believe, committed about seventy-five percent of his time to, to the, to the wastewater plant. Brian had left, and we didn't have an A license, so we, we hired Mark Krennic, who, that wasn't part of the, his job description was to have an A license. So, he, he allocates, and this is what we do for budgetary purposes, is twenty-five percent of his time for Murpuck work. And that work consists of basically managing the personnel that operate the plant. So, there's two individuals, basically two FTEs that work one hundred percent of their time, that are city of La Sure employees that operate the plant. Now, there's other employees, other wastewater water operators that fill in from time to time with vacation and P T O. On-call time, that rotates, so there's two, two weeks on-call, and it rotates through the whole group. So, there's been some changes. I would, I'm, I'm not exactly sure how, what the financials were as far as what the city of La Sure was billing back to Murpuck during that time period. I think that time period was kind of a, kind of getting our bearings, or both La Sure and Henderson were getting our bearings as far as what it actually took to, to run the plant. So, basically, what the direction from the board was, they need a full-time Um, basically what the direction from the board was, they need a full-time, full-time manager, full-time director, something like that. To, to address all the issues. Um, the Stan Tech has been providing the A licensure. For I believe two years or a little over two years now. So what MRF Puck does is they contract with somebody to meet the A plant licensure requirement. And that satisfies our reporting requirement with the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency. So right now, twenty seventeen budgeted. I believe we had about two point, well, including, including my time, three point zero five FTEs. Were budgeted for in twenty seventeen.
So Krennic was twenty-five percent wastewater and seventy-five percent what?
Well, we, so he has, um, water, waste water for the city. The, the sanitary sewer collection system for the city and then MRF Puck. So the way it was broken up was twenty-five percent and then that seventy-five percent was, is broken up between. Our sanitary sewer collection system and our water delivery system. So and that, that was based on the budget that was approved by MRF Puck in twenty sixteen when I came here. Twenty seventeen, we, we increased that budget a little bit, um, just based on actual costs and then twenty, the twenty eighteen budget, that process. I did research and developed all the, all the things that we weren't necessarily charging back to MRF Puck. Um, for services and it's, it's, it's a, it's a matter of semantics. Because if you look at the revenues, the city of La Sure is ninety-five percent of the revenue stream. So. We can say we're charging MRF Puck more money, but MRF Puck gets ninety-five percent of their money from the city of La Sure. So. It's not a, a big deal, but you know, for the bookkeeping purposes and for the transparency of the way the organization works, it's. It's essential. Um, so you'll see in the budgets, there's some substantial increases in some items between twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen. And that's due to just that examination of things like workers' compensation, um, PTO, on-call time. Uh, just some of those benefits that we weren't charging back, that the city of La Sure was paying. But we, we weren't charging back to MRF Puck. So.
And we've had these discussions that MRF Puck, MRF Puck didn't know these things. Until we get that from the city of La Sure. And when we get it from the city of La Sure, we stand back and say, this isn't right. You know, we're supposed to be operating as a business and we're not paying for all the costs that we should be. And that's. Okay, now I look back at it as I, the, the MRF Puck hat goes on and I have to look at it and say. Um, my customer is being overcharged. And that's, I can't have that. Um, so what's fair, and what's fair is, is you don't overcharge your customer. But the reality is, is it costs more to run the plant than what you thought it did. Uh, these are the issues that we've been running into, um.
Can we get back to my FTE question? We got three point oh five now. With the improvements that you're suggesting, what are we gonna have?
I believe, I'd have to look at the analysis, I believe it'd be one director, uh, two and a half. Um, operators and then three quarters, so we go up to three point seven five.
One director, two point five operators and what else?
A quarter of an admin assistant. That's what was approved.
Three point seven five, so about seventy percent more. And we don't have Stan Tech anymore?
Well, we, we currently do, so, um.
No, I, what we currently do, with the new plan, will Stan Tech still be involved?
They would not. I believe the intention is for the director to have an A license. So.
But the budget says you go from forty-one last year to fifty for Stan Tech this year.
That is because there's other engineering services that Stan Tech provides to, for, like, like bidding and, and engineering items. So.
Okay, but our A license holder is not a Stan Tech employee any longer. He's on his, he's.
Correct, yeah. So Stan Tech still has a budget item because. They don't, MRF Puck doesn't have a designated engineering company that they work with, but in the last year, they've done. Pretty much all of their work with Stan Tech. So they got their own little item and they have a little budget to work with if we need some engineering done.
And the seventy-five percent water sanitary sewer, where does that go? If, if, is that the same person that loses twenty-five percent of the wastewater or what, what happens to the water and sanitary?
If, that's a gr- great question. If MRF Puck, uh, implements what they have, there will be some organizational changes within the city of La Sure. Uh, because one, we don't, we wouldn't have that aspect of MRF Puck for our superintendent, uh, and. Two of our operators that are currently employed by the city of La Sure spend one hundred percent of their time at MRF Puck. So I think the intention is for those two individuals to be just MRF Puck employees and have a nice smooth, smooth transition. Um, but until those things are worked out, we don't know exactly what will happen.
With the water and the sanitary sewer?
Well, we, we still need to have that. So if they're, if MRF Puck hires a director, we'll still have a water and wastewater superintendent. That will just be instead of sixty-seven percent of their time being dedicated to that, one hundred percent of their time will be split between water and wastewater.
So they go from seventy-five percent to a hundred percent?
Correct. Which, which in my opinion is necessary, uh. You'll look at, look at our CIP from twenty, or twenty eighteen CIP, we have a, a lot of maintenance things that we're trying to address for water. So. I don't, I think it's, it's, it's almost necessary for us to go that route regardless of what MRF Puck does.
And for us, um, and, and it was, it was a nice ending on our, on our last meeting. Uh, because, uh, it was indicated by Henderson as well that, uh, that. We, we as the puck wanna sit down and start talking about amending and making changes to the. Um, to the JPA. We, we see that there's these issues. Part of the issues that, that the puck is kinda going through is that. Um, the cities are meeting without the puck talking. So we don't know that the meeting happens, we're left out, the cities have a meeting. And then we catch the aftermath and in things that, that the cities wanna see us talking about and doing. We're not there to even be in, involved in those discussions. And there is, even on the Henderson side. Uh, there is some agitation that's going on with that. You know, um. The intention for the GP, JPA is for, uh, for the puck to be a standalone. But it's, uh, it's like mommy and daddy don't trust the kids. That's how it feels. You know, uh, and, and we're, we're all intelligent people that are on this, uh, on this commission and we. Uh, I, I see a team that wants to get the stuff done. And, um, and elevate it from what it has ever been. Um, keep in mind, some of the things that we're trying to get out of having that person in that position is. That is a, a very complicated facility. Now, Mark understands more of it as being on the engineering end of things and so does Robin from Henderson because she's on the engineering things. Um, but some of us walk in, uh, and I understand how to run a company. But there are more acronyms in a wastewater, uh, treatment facility that it takes forever to try to come up to speed as to what they're talking about. We don't have a handbook. We don't have a place, uh, where, where all of the resolutions are for us to be able to have access to. Jasper has been working with, uh, Sherry to try to get, uh. They, they weren't even holding on to, uh, all of the recordings from the, uh, uh, from meetings. So they would do the, the minutes and then whenever the, the, um, the tablet got filled. They dump a couple of months and record it. So we're, you know, trying to get all of this information so that. When I wanna go back through, I don't wanna just read the minutes, I wanna listen to what, you know, why did people make these decisions? You make a decision and, you know, how did you arrive at that? The minutes don't normally say that. Did you, you know, they, they're condensed. Um, a lot of times you wanna find out how they came to a decision. Um. These are all things that we're trying to get put together, but how do you do that when you don't have staff? Henderson's not putting anything towards it. So.
So you answered my question there. Can I ask you one or two more? And they have asked these before, the fifty-fifty percent split on the joint powers thing, um, doesn't make sense if. La Sure and his ninety-five percent Henderson's five percent of the revenue. So we don't have to discuss that here. But eventually you're gonna be discussing that on the.
No, actually I agree with you and I don't have a problem saying that, so.
But is that gonna, is that up for more discussion or is that just?
Oh, it's all gonna have to be talked about. There's realities that are in there.
Then the other question I have is joint powers. If the joint powers commission stops meeting for some reason. And it goes on for several months. Who steps in, who intervenes to make sure that they do meet?
Again, you come into, you come into projection, first of all, and second of all, it, it's, i- it is run by, uh. By members of city council from both places. If we weren't meeting. And I wasn't giving a report, then, then there's.
Who corrects that? City council has the power jointly to, to intervene?
Well, I, if I could step in, I think, so the mayor appoints these individuals. If, if the group isn't working, if something's going on. It's the mayor's duty to appoint people from our city council that will meet. So if they're, if they're not meeting. Then I would recommend that the mayor then reappoint some other people. Uh, there is, there is no real checks and balances, you know, in the bylaws. They, they basically have to meet at least monthly to approve bills.
Okay, you know why I'm asking this?
Yeah.
The Cablevision Joint Powers fell apart and nobody knew what to do.
Okay, so.
Let it go and let it go and let it go. And I realize that's not as a major as, as this is and it went, but.
So what happens with the school board decided not to meet anymore? Who's got charge over it?
That's a good question.
All right, at the end of the day, you know, you can't project. At the end of the day, um. If, if, if city council is involved and asks questions. Then you wouldn't have had what happened to the cable commission. You know, uh, it's city council's aspect of that just as much. Go ahead, Mark.
What I was saying about the cable commission being different from this is, cable mission had one person from the city council, it was run by citizens. Not by, the, the cable commission was run by citizens, not by a city council. Whereas the MRF Puck is run by city council members and not ci- not, there's no citizens involved.
And, and I can add something, you know, I'm watching all this stuff too, so if something's going on, I'm gonna say. This isn't working and we need to make it work. Cause it's a big deal. I mean, it's, it's a large expenditure for the city. And we wanna make sure that, yeah, this JPA is, is, has, has both cities' best interests. When they're, when they're meeting. So, you know, there's, there's checks and balances. I don't think there's an official checks and balances, but, um. You know, it's, it's something that we can, we can talk about. I know the board is talking about, uh, developing some bylaws. In that, those bylaws, some of those checks and balances could be put in place, so. Um, you know, I, I, I understand exactly where you're coming from, but I, I feel like we have a, a good, uh. Good pulse of what's going on at MRF Puck. I think in twenty seventeen, and correct me if I'm wrong, board members, I think you guys met. At least fourteen times in twelve months. So there were a couple special meetings, um. You know, we had the joint meeting, uh, here, uh, the beginning of February. So there, there were the. I don't see it being an issue that there's, they're not meeting. And. I don't believe we had a single meeting in twenty seventeen that we didn't have quorum. I think there was some that were kinda waiting around.
Came close.
It came close, you know, within ten minutes or so and, but we ended up getting quorum. So I don't think there was an issue of, of that either, so.
And then, uh, in all fairness with our, with our, our partners in, in Henderson, um. You know, uh, for the amount of work that we've been able to get done through, um. Our meeting starts at five, okay? Their city council meeting starts at seven. So without trying to rush through a meeting, but still trying to get everything done that needs to get done and hit on the topics. I think, I think that the commission has done a great job with doing that type of stuff. Uh, we've had, we've had one split vote out of an entire year. And, and even that's not done because. In the last, in, in our last meeting, I, I said, we would be revisiting this. We will have a resolution because the cities did talk. City of La Sore has made a, a decision on. On what they're willing to do and MRF Puck was going to be fine with that and so was Henderson. It's all fine. Um. I have my, uh, my MRF Puck hat where I'm going to be very. Defending of, of what that JP A is, until I'm told that that's not my job anymore. When I sit here, it's city council. I'll tell you right now, when I'm, when I'm at. MRF Puck, I don't want Jasper doing that job. When I'm sitting here, I want, I want Jasper doing that job. Cause when I'm sitting here, I know that what he's doing, um, is. It's in the benefit of the city of La Sore and I, I get that. Um, but that's all the more reason why we're, we're having those, those discussions. Thank you for answering.
I, can I? The, the fifty-fifty thing still makes no sense to me. If you wanna put a topic up there, I know it's sensitive and. It, it doesn't make sense if we're ninety-five percent of the revenue. And we have three votes and the other community has three. And on a broader picture, either community can hold the other one hostage. If they don't show up or if we don't show up, I, I mean, we have the same issue. There, there's something wrong here. Maybe some checks and balances if, you know, whatever. And you say, well, the mayor appoints people, but if the mayor doesn't wanna do it, cause you know, we're into a city-to-city thing. There's something not right here. We gotta think about that. But I have some other questions, probably at a little different level. Jasper's time and staff time. In effect, will we be, if this hiring a superintendent, I think you called the person. If we do that, we restructure MRF Puck if you do, as a commission. Does the city of La Sure reduce its labor cost and its staff time cost? It should.
Yes, yeah, and it's essentially, I would call it a shell game, right? So the, the, the revenues, like. We won't receive revenues from MRF Puck for the services and we won't be paying two additional pl- employees for those services. But then we will likely be paying it through revenues. If, if MRF Puck would have to adjust their rates because of their employees.
That's, that, that's not what I heard before. I heard that we were not collecting for some of the things we were doing.
We, we weren't in twenty seventeen. Twenty eighteen, we are. We're, we're collecting for everything.
Okay, I'm, I'm with you now. So in, in the end, here's the big question. The consumer in La Sore, and I'm not gonna say Henderson, I just, La Sore, cause that's our budget. We're not paying staff people here. We're taking some people out of our pension plan, for example, I would think. We're not paying them anymore. It's done through MRF Puck. But in the end, is it gonna come out basically the same, our consumer is going to pay the same amount. For the, the two sides, the city side and the MRF Puck side. Is it gonna balance out or is it gonna go up? Because we're hiring this person, it costs more than we're paying somebody now. Jasper's doing the work, but we're not paying him in effect to do that. Okay?
Yeah, eh, I can answer that. So there is a, there is an increase in cost. If everything is equal between. The city of La Sore having the employees and providing contracted work versus MRF Puck having, there is. You know, economy of scale, we have thirty-nine FTEs, MRF Puck will potentially have three FTEs. So, you know, there's, there's a bottom line for certain benefit levels. So there is a slight increase to have their own employees. But I believe the board feels, and I'm speaking on behalf of the board, and maybe some board members can, can speak about it, but. I feel like that level of service that, that they're projecting will be increased to have somebody directly reporting to them, taking direction. Is warranted for that increase, so.
And does it, does, I, I, a crazy analogy. I don't like to drive a car with three wheels. I want four. Or better said, I want good tires, okay? If, is this gonna produce some kind of efficiency in terms of, for example, capital management of the equipment? So in the end, we're actually gonna benefit because we have somebody there on the spot, not working from this office in this building, going down there.
Well, it's funny that you say that. Uh, we have this wonderful discussion and, uh, and, uh, we found out. At, at one of the meetings about the, uh, um, the screen set. That, um, uh, they had to go, uh, they being our, uh, the operators. Went to a whole bunch of different facilities to look at these screens, uh, and decide what was going to work best. And who better to know that than the people that are gonna be operating it? And, uh, when they, they came back, uh, and we were ju- just questioning them, what did you think about it? What did you, you know, how about this? And one of the guys says, well, you know, it's a, it's an interesting thing, cause they, they have one more operator than, than what we do. And I said, okay, so is that guy just kinda standing? And I said, okay, so is that guy just kinda standing around? What's, you know, what's happening with that? And they said, no, the place is really clean. And I, and, and, uh, it was Mayor Hag that brought up the question of, okay, really clean, what about the maintenance schedules and so on? And we find out then that the maintenance manual hadn't quite been, that they were supposed to have, that's, I don't know, how many hundred pages? Six hundred and something pages, uh, hadn't, hadn't been followed. Um, so the maintenance schedule really needs to be put together and maintained and, and that means that our many-million-dollar facility that's down there, um, um, hasn't, hasn't totally been being maintained the way that it should. So does the price go up? Well, it does when I'm having to go through and put a brand-new screen in, because it wasn't the correct thing. When I have to go and put in the sentry line, because it wasn't put in when it was supposed to. It does when I'm looking at the idea that, well, all of our solid materials, our A-class solid materials, hey, look, here what I'm talking about? I had no idea what A-class solid materials were a year ago, but this is a major issue, all right? We've got these things sitting in an open dome that's, that's open on end. And I have a, I have an engineer that's sitting over there as well, that works, uh, that is, uh, part of our, um, uh, our, our Merpuck board from Henderson, uh, who's asking question, that shouldn't be open. That's not a good thing. You don't wanna get water on that. You get water on that, it can smolder. Smoldering's not good when you have A-class material. So we're looking at what the cost is going to be to put concrete underneath this thing, like it should have been done and designed to begin with, so. There's a whole series of things that, that should have been, that haven't been. And, uh, and, uh, what are you getting for that? It done right? Is the cost gonna go up? Yeah, there's good possibility cost is gonna go up. Is it gonna go up exponentially? I don't see where that would be. Um, uh, any business that you run, you need to have the money to be able to sit there to fix and maintain the things that you have. And you have to have the money to be able to pay for the employees.
Understood. Uh, go back, take my analogies away before. Maybe it's something like not having your car aligned and you're messing up the tires, when if you had them aligned, you'd be saving money in the end. That's what we're looking at.
Or changing the oil, so, but.
Yeah. So what's the bottom line on my question about the cost to the consumer? What do we know? Maybe we don't know yet.
We don't know yet, but we, we have some projections, and they're really just projections. Um, once it gets implemented and Merpuck goes out and gets, uh, uh, workers' comp quotes from vendors, you know, we'll get some solid numbers. What I used is our League of Minnesota Cities contact, which Merpuck can use those. They can use their, uh, a joint powers and they're a municipal entity. So they can utilize all the tools that we have. But there's that economy of scale aspect. That, that, that's where the savings come in with, uh, La Sourd having the employees. So, um, so yeah, I, just to, I mean, we could talk about Merpuck. Johnny knows I can talk about Merpuck for hours. But, um, you know, just kinda keep in mind, you know, maybe in April or so, we might have a joint meeting with, with Henderson. Uh, if you have topics that you would like to discuss as a city council, send them my way and I will add them. I have a few here that I got just from this conversation. Uh, but yeah, as things come up, just let me know and we'll try to formulate an agenda and get something set, uh, as far as a meeting goes.
Joint meeting this when, did you say?
Um, well, hoping maybe in April sometime. Uh, I think that'll give us enough time to formulate an agenda and answer any questions that, that city council may have.